Good evening, the hour having arrived and the quorum being present. I declare this March 19th, 2019, meeting of the Norwood Board of Selectmen officially in session. We will begin tonight's meeting, as we always do, with a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silent prayer or reflection. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have three appointments tonight. At 7 o'clock, we are meeting with Kerry McCarthy, Executive Director of the Norwood Senior Center. At 7:15, Travis Farley, the Superintendent of the Recreation Department. And at 7:30, we have a continuation of a show cause hearing with Outback Steakhouse of Florida LLC, DBA Outback Steakhouse. So first, we would like to welcome, for our first appointment, Kerry McCarthy, Executive Director of the Norwood Senior Center. And Kerry, welcome. We're delighted you were able to join us. And why don't you tell us what's going on at the Senior Center?
All right, sure. Thank you. Thank you for having me tonight. I appreciate that, giving me your time. Tonight's report, I will just give you a little bit of what's going on here at the Norwood Senior Center. It may appear that all we do is party at the center, but there's a lot more happening than that. We currently have 16 exercise classes a week. Some of our classes range from 30 to 55 participants. We have a daily average attendance of 80 to 100 people when it's not a function, coming through the center anywhere from 8 to 4 in the afternoon. Some days, we have to shuffle them out at 4:00 PM. We have lots of other programs, Bridge, cribbage, WIST, mahjong. Our Learn to Play Mahjong is one of our fastest-growing programs. We're actually running out of room in the room that they are in. We're going to have to kind of switch things around a little bit. We also offer tap dance, line dance, our classes, and computers classes. Nancy Kelleher is our program coordinator, and she has a huge task of scheduling our programs. She does very successful day trips. Monday, there are 55 seniors who go into the new casino at Springfield at MGM. And her, along with Anne Marie, keep the center flowing. They organize all the activities and the volunteers. Our senior bus transports our seniors each and every day to medical appointments, errands, shopping, and to the center. Ellen averages over 100 trips on a weekly basis. Somebody will say to me, "Oh, I saw the bus empty." But what they didn't realize is that Ellen dropped two people off at Guile Building, brought someone home by the airport, shuffled three people to a hair appointment. So she's just constantly going. She doesn't stop, often doesn't park the bus until way after her 4 o'clock start time. So we're very lucky to have Ellen. Our outreach department, Trish Monahan is our outreach coordinator. She does an amazing job helping the Norwood seniors with their food stamps, applications, fuel assistance, health insurance, medical equipment, and a slew of other services that people may need to age in place in their homes safely and with some financial resources. No senior should go without food or heat because they aren't a fixed income. So if Trish can't help you, she will find somebody who does. And we see some really sad stories. We try to help people to our best reability. We're fortunate that we have some gift cards that are given to us at the beginning of the year, so if someone's food stamps were cut off, we're able to give them a little bit of money to get, or grocery gift card to help them get through the week. And oftentimes, we'll go to the freezer and get a loaf of bread for them. So Trish, the outreach department is huge, and it's just for Norwood seniors. So Trish only services the Norwood residents in that department. And intergenerational programs, we have a lot of them. We work with Travis at the Rec Center, doing some intergenerational. We have a pen pal program with the Old Town School. And we have the young adults from the LEAD program. They go on the bus with Ellen if it's not filled, and they help the seniors bring their groceries into their apartments. So that's a great intergenerational program. And we also, the Little Mustangs are in our building now. So they come over and perform for us, but our seniors also go over and perform for them. So it's a great relationship that we have. And of course, the lunch program, the intergenerational lunch program is great as well. So there's a lot happening. We have great friends of the Council on Aging, which is our fundraising group, with a great SUE board and wonderful staff, and great support from you guys.
Yeah. Well, we love the Senior Center. How long have you been the director of that?
I've been the director almost five years now.
Almost five years, very good. And you're happy there?
Oh, my God. I love my job. I love getting up every morning, coming to work.
Okay, that's great.
It is great, it's great.
Questions, comments, observations? Mr. Bishop?
Peaceful for so long, I don't want to say anything.
Say that again?
I said it's been peaceful for so long, like five years, so I don't want to say anything.
All right, Mr. Bishop?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You've taken the Senior Center over the last year to a whole new dimension, a whole new level. You've got a great staff, you do a great job, it's a friendly and inviting environment. And I know some days, we talked about this last week, you can't even find a parking spot up there because so many people want to be there. And it benefits the Senior Center because they're not home alone, sitting there, watching TV and reruns and everything else. It's a healthy environment for them to get out of the house, go there, whether it's an exercise program, mahjong, whatever it might be. There's a social interreaction, and that's very good. So thank you for everything you do and your staff.
Thank you, thank you. Social isolation is really, it's really harmful to seniors. So our job is to bring someone in and engage them and keep them.
And they're always happy there, too. That's another thing I left out.
It is, it's really.
It is a cheerful place.
Yeah, it really is. Everybody's happy.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Donahue?
Oh, thank you. Kerry, the Ellen Ross Reyno that drives the bus, did you know that her father and Judge Sullivan, when they were there at the Senior Center, that they organized the whole town, making sure that people had numbers on their houses for safety?
I heard that, in the Why Not Club?
That's right. That was one of their major things that they did. But you are right, Ellen works very, very, very hard. Everyone there does. Also, we should mention to the townspeople about your, for Norwood seniors, the medical supplies?
Oh, right, the medical equipment.
Maybe, could you be kind enough to say a little word about that?
Sure, so we have a medical equipment loan closet with durable medical equipment, walkers, wheelchairs, shower chairs, sock pullers, reachers, and any Norwood resident, strictly for Norwood residents, we had to stop loading up to other towns, so it's strictly for Norwood residents. You can come in, borrow it. There's no age limit on it, it's not just for seniors, so anyone can borrow it and just return it when you're done.
And when you think how Phil McCoy and the Friends of the Council on Aging, how they've raised all that money, they helped build the garage, they bought the bus, they helped when the senior was being built, they gave, they raised hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Yeah, they're a very good group. We have a great relationship.
And everyone there, the people that do the exercises are an example for us because they're older than us and they're healthier than us.
Absolutely, absolutely. And you can tell, you can tell the ones that exercise, you know, if they go out for a hip replacement, a knee replacement, their back a lot quicker than those who don't.
Isn't that something?
Yeah, we have a saying, "If you rest, you rot."
Woo!
Thank you for all you do.
Thank you, thank you.
Well, I for one, I'm sorry to hear that. Mr. Howard?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, Kerry. Five years already, my gosh. I just can't believe that. I mean, it just seems like one or two, really, how time flies. But the way you've brought us into the new world with the Senior Center up there since you've been there, it's been wonderful. Absolutely wonderful.
Thank you.
The lunch program, having the students there, I'm sure they get a lot out of the interaction with the seniors there. And the seniors, of course, for $5 for these wonderful lunches, I mean, that's just so great, so great. And they're great lunches, too. If anything, there's too much.
Right, right.
I mean, but wonderful. One thing, I don't know if you mentioned it or not, the SHINE program.
Oh, yes.
Did you mention that? That's such a good program.
So the SHINE program is actually through the state and, well, it's federal, and of course, it is often getting cut, but it's volunteers that come to the Senior Center. We have, we're fortunate that we have two volunteers a week come in, and it's called, what it stands for is serving the health insurance needs of everyone. And we have two volunteers a week that come in and help with Medicare questions, drug plans, open enrollment. And they're always booked a month out, but anyone can come have a visit with them. And we're fortunate that our outreach coordinator is also a SHINE counselor, so she's able to fill in the overlap.
Each year, I go to them, and they help me find the least expensive plan for my needs.
Right.
You know, I mean, it's incredible how good those ladies.
And Carol's been with us a long time, and for a volunteer, she does excellent work.
For volunteers.
For a volunteer, yeah.
But it's such a great service. It really helps a lot. It saves hundreds and hundreds of dollars.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you so much again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. Getting back to the topic of parties, Kerry, no, we had the St. Patrick's Day luncheon last Thursday, it was wonderful. Can you tell us a little bit about the tech staff that does the cooking up there?
Sure. So it's the Education Co-op, which is in Walpole. It used to be, the school used to be in the Savage Center, but they relocated to Walpole. It's the Phoenix Academy, and it's an alternative high school for students who can, you know, learn in the mainstream classroom. And the Culinary Arts Program is led by Chef Andrew and his assistant Diane, and they come in and they teach the kids culinary skills. They are trained with Bar OSHA, food safety. They're starting a whole baking component, and they cook lunches for us and cater all our events, Monday, Tuesday, Thursdays, and Fridays, from 11:30 to 1:00. And actually, Tony now comes once a month and has lunch with the seniors. And $5, you can really, like Alan said, you can get a really great lunch. Soup, what will happen, a lot of times, the seniors will have soup and their dessert and their beverage at the Senior Center, and then take their entree home for dinner that night.
Very good. Well, the food is great, you know?
Yes, it is.
Thanksgiving, Christmas, and all the other events that you have, you have great attendance at those meals, too.
Oh, yeah, we sell out every, we squeeze table, jizz in as much as we can to get everybody. And the one thing we also do is every morning, we put out pastry, fresh fruit, and oatmeal so that anybody can come have a healthy breakfast in the morning as well, for free. We've got that out every morning.
That's great. Very good. Anything else?
That's great.
Well, we want to thank you again for coming in. We should make, we should do this more frequently.
Sure, love to.
So we look forward to it again. Thank you, Kerry.
All right, thank you very much. Have a nice night.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up is Travis Farley, our Superintendent of the Recreation Department, with his monthly report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Thank you for giving me this time to share what we have upcoming in the Recreation Department. Before I get into my report, I'd like to welcome Mr. Howard back. I know I'm a week late with that, but welcome back. It's good to see you back.
Thank you so much.
No problem. Kind of getting into the report, February Vacation was extremely successful. We had about 70 participants in seven different programs, ranging from Extreme Vacation Week to Global Art to Kids' Baking. We actually had a Princess Tea Party as well with about 10 participants. It was really cool to see the girls dresses up as different, various princesses, so it was fun to see. So February Vacation was a busy time at the Civic. We had a winter carnival, our first annual winter carnival, was the first time we've ever done anything like this, on Saturday, March 2nd. We actually had about 375 participants come to the winter carnival. It was a collaboration with the Junior Women's Club, and we had a key sponsor from the Dedham Savings Bank as well, so I'd like to say thank you very much to Dedham Savings Bank for helping to sponsor the event. We couldn't have done it without them. But we had games and prizes and DJs and food, so it was a lot of fun, the kids had a blast. It was good to see on a winter afternoon to get out and join us at the Civic as well. Our spring programs, we actually just had a next session of spring programming just start on the week of March 4th. We actually had 16 different programs start with a wide variety, from karate to theater to art, sports, volleyball, little scientists, so we had a wide variety of programs start. We actually had close to 350 participants all combined during that last session, so it was pretty exciting, a lot of involvement, which is great. One-day hits, one-day hits over the last month, we had a Celebrate Dr. Seuss One-Day Hit program, we had a Parents' Night Out, we offered a babysitting class, first aid, CPR. So we had quite a few one-day hits over the last month. And we have our always popular Baseball Fundamentals class, we partnered with the Norwood Diamond Club on. We actually had about 66 participants for this program, we're actually just wrapping up tonight. So a huge thank you to the Norwood Diamond Club. It is, they have 45 kids in there in one session, it gives me heart palpitations to see, but they have a, the high school varsity comes in and they help run it with the Norwood Diamond Club. It's really awesome to see, the kids have a blast, it's a lot of fun. The Floraki Championships actually just wrapped up, our indoor Floraki program. Our squirt division champs were the Phantoms, and our mites division champs were the Flames. So we actually had NCM there to broadcast the championship week. We had families come, it was a lot of fun. So I want to say thank you to all our volunteer coaches that helped us run it. We literally couldn't run it without the parents that helped us volunteer to coach the team, so it was a lot of fun to see it. The kids got all excited, we had announcements, we had the National Anthem, it was a fun championship game to see, it was a lot of fun. So that's kind of everything we've had over the last month. And some upcoming stuff we have, we actually have our community dodgeball tournament. I know Katie C. Settler, our program director, is working very hard to promote this as well. It's a collaboration between Intact Norwood and ourselves. It's actually this Saturday at 5:00 PM at the Civic, there's still registration space. I think you can register at the high school, but you can always register at the Civic Center online. It's $5 per participant, it gets you a T-shirt, and I forget how many games it's guaranteed, but it's a lot of fun. It's, we're working with, I think, every two, every two adults is going to be paired with three high school students, so hopefully, it's going to be a good gathering between high school, middle school kids and adults, so it should be a lot of fun. So if you're interested, please register. You can register individually at the Civic Center as well. And our ever-popular Easter egg hunt, Saturday, April 13th, so please hold that date on your calendar. It's Saturday morning. We do encourage folks to try to pre-register because the morning of always gets chaotic. So it's actually a collaboration with the Willard School PTA, so thank you to them for helping us, helping us market the event and run it as well. It takes a lot of, a lot of hands to try to spread out, I think it's roughly 9,000 eggs, so it's a, it's a lot of work on Saturday morning, so it's a huge help to have them. They help us market it, and it's a lot of fun to see the kids. That morning, I think last year, we had about three or four inches of snow, so it made it even harder to get the eggs, but it was fun to watch. And we have a couple one-day hits coming up as well. We are Easter egg dyeing class on Wednesday, April 10th, and we actually have our final Parents' Night Out on April 12th as well. So if you're looking to get a night out as a parent, it's at the Civic Center as well on Friday night. And then on April Vacation, we have, again, a very popular, popular and busy April Vacation. Hopefully, we have an Extreme Week program, which is a collaboration between sports, and they actually take a couple field trips as well. We have a beginner golf class, which is actually going to be offered at Norwood Country Club. And we're actually going to be offering a Kids' Baking class. And last but not certainly least, we're going to be doing a STEM Lego class at the Civic Center as well. So if you're, if you're sticking around to April Vacation at the Civics, we have a lot going on at the Civic Center, so we'd love to have you. Please inquire. You can, you can, you can visit online, but you can also call if you have any questions on April Vacation programming. And pickleball continues to be popular throughout the season, so we have about 15 or 20 people that come on Tuesdays and Thursdays. It's fun to see, they're a good group, so if you ever want to check it out, Tuesdays is in the morning, I believe it's 9:30 to 11:00, and then Thursdays, 1:00. So just come on and check it out, there's drop-in program, so there's a little commitment to that. And a few things that we actually don't have in our report, we have our summer apps, so lifeguards, pool maintenance, tag checkers, camp counselors, we're always looking for applications, so if you have any high school, college kids that are looking for some summer jobs, we're actually currently taking applications for all those positions. And one final thing, this is kind of working with the Norwood DPW and Mr. Ryan on, is fields are still closed. I know it's super nice out, everyone wants to get on the fields, but the tentative open date for fields is April 1st. Knock on wood, hopefully, there won't be any snow in between now and then, so hopefully, we'll have the fields open by then, barring any issues with the Norwood DPW Department. So, and I'm sorry if so long-winded, that's the thing we got going on at the Civic. It's been a busy month, and hopefully, we'll have another good month, too.
Yeah, we like, we like the public relations element of this monthly report, Travis. So absolutely, it's great that you went through all this. And I noticed, but I want to turn it over to my colleagues, I noticed, looking at the dollars, FY '19 compared FY '18 in total receipts under the various categories are up about 13% year-to-date over fiscal '18. Now, at first glance, I would say that's pretty good. However, let me ask, are we seeing any drop-off, however? Are we seeing people just being discouraged because of increases in fee, or higher fees?
No, I don't think so. I think it's actually a reflection, since the fiscal year starts in July 1, it's actually, it's almost a reflection on a good summer last summer, because it's July 1 on, so it's actually, it's almost a good snapshot of how we did last summer. And then as we build up towards the summer, you're going to see an increase, that actually number is probably going to go up because we take in all of our registrations for spring, summer programs.
Okay.
So it's kind of hard to get a snapshot because the fiscal year actually ends like almost in the meat of summer for us.
Yeah.
So it's, but I'm hoping that, hopefully, we're going to continue to see that, but the increase in fees for play camp, senior play, and junior play, which are our big summer programs, and the pool tags, we didn't see much of, we didn't get a lot of pushback, we didn't get much feedback on folks that were concerned. We actually do give out financial aid as well, so if there's anyone that needs, that needs that assistance, they can always contact us. We do have financial aid options for parents.
Okay. You're always trying to balance that, you know, the desire to have the users pay something here to defray the cost to the taxpayers, but at the same time, provide enough services. It is a community asset, and we want it to be used, so.
Exactly. We always say we want to see participants and people in the pools and people in the program, so we try to help everyone out as much as we can to see people involved in the Recreation Department.
Very good. Questions for Mr. Farley? Comments?
Just agreed with you to make an extra announcement, I'll take a stay off the fields.
Yes, we'll be working with the DPW. I know they have a closed fields listed on all their fields right now, but we will be making announcements on social media to make sure folks know as well. And we issue all the field permits, we don't issue them until after the field's actually opened, so no one should be having practice or anything like that before that date.
It's a shame, because everyone might say, "Once you get out, there's good weather," but they're just too wet, too soggy.
Yeah, it gets wet, soggy.
It's going to destroy them if you go and play hot on them.
Exactly. It's New England, New England, spring in New England, it's always, once it gets like super nice, it's, you got to let the ground unthaw, like you said, it's muddy on the field, so, but everybody, literally, everybody wants to get out on the field.
The old ham, I can't even let my dog go out there because he goes down.
Yeah, it goes right down, yeah, exactly.
Very good. Okay, Mr. Farley, that was easy. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
We have a continuation of a show cause hearing scheduled for 7:30. We've got about seven minutes. We do start that type of thing right on time, so we've got a little bit of time to begin running through new business, so if my colleagues will indulge me, let's see. New business number one, licenses for 2019 and '20, they are listed here.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Howard?
Motion to sign the licenses.
Motion to sign the licenses made.
Seconded.
And seconded, any questions, comments, or concerns on that? Hearing none, we'll put it to a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Thank you. Number two, April meetings, there are five Tuesdays in April. Does the board wish to cancel one meeting? What is the wish of the board?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Bishop?
Make a motion that we eliminate the April 16th meeting. It's right in the middle of the month, it's Easter week.
April 16th, we have a motion on the floor made and seconded to not hold a meeting on April 16th. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll put it to a vote, all in favor? Opposed, unanimous. All right, number three, thank you, number three, car wash, Center of Hope Haiti, Saturday, April 27th, from 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Another car wash request for the Norwood High School Cheer, Saturday, April, I'm sorry, Saturday, August 10th, from 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM. And the third one from the Norwood Mustang Hockey Club, Saturday, September 14th, from 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM.
Motion approved.
Motion approved, made and seconded. Anything further? Hearing none, put it to a vote, all in favor? Opposed, unanimous. Thank you. Number five, Inchenzo La Fredo, Vico Restaurant de Taliano, 89 Central Street, Norwood, submitting request for permission to sell cordials at Vico Restaurant de Taliano.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Howard?
These people have done a great job since they've been in Norwood, are running this facility, and I make a motion that we approve.
Mr. Chair, on the motion?
On the, motion seconded, Mr. Bishop, and then two?
Seconded, I'm sorry, seconded. This motion is going to require an article for the town meeting, so I would ask that my colleagues accept Mr. Howard's recommendation and create a motion to accept the wording of Chapter 138, Section 12, submitted to town meeting.
Wasn't, wasn't his motion to give him the license?
Well, his motion is to give the license.
So we can't?
We'll ask him to amend it.
Right, you know, but even what Mr. Bishop just said was to accept Mr. Howard.
We have to reword, we wanted to simply make a new motion to.
So Mr. Howard?
Insert an article on the special town meeting.
Motion to send it to town meeting, Mr. Chair.
All right, so we're going to ask town meeting to accept the language of Chapter 138, Section 12. Should I read it? What was that?
Paragraph 15.
Paragraph 15.
Line 2.
Never ends. Okay, no, so, I'll just read it, it's the second paragraph, right, Christine, that this would be, "Accepting a common victualer who holds a license for the sale of all alcohol beverages or holds a license for the sale of wines and malt beverages, and who also holds pursuant to this section written approval to sell liqueurs and cordials pursuant to his license may provide on-premises sample liqueurs and cordials tasting. Provide, however, that a licensing shall not solicit orders for liqueurs and cordials for off-premises consumption, and provided further that any such liqueurs and cordials tasting shall be limited to one quarter of an ounce per serving and food shall be served in conjunction with any liqueurs and cordials tasting." So that is the paragraph we are.
No, Mr. Chair.
What's that?
No.
Go ahead.
It's the chair, it's the same paragraph, it's in the.
This one.
Yep.
This one right here.
All right. In any, so it's different from this paragraph that I just read?
Yes.
Yes, that's the next, I think that's the following paragraph, maybe, and the.
So in any city or town that votes to accept the provisions of this paragraph, a common victualer who holds a license under the section to sell wines and malt beverages may, upon written approval, also sell liqueurs and cordials pursuant to said license, subject to all other licensing provisions of this chapter.
So if town meeting accepts this section, then by written permission of the licensing authority, they can also sell liqueurs.
Perfect. All right, so the motion is to put that, to ask town meeting to accept the language. Okay? Mr. Howard, is that your motion?
It is, Mr. Bishop.
Is it seconded, Mr. Bishop? All right, anything further? Hearing none, put it to a vote, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. All right, good, thank you. All right. Number six, Verizon submitting check in the amount of $1,775 for the annual license fee, which should be deposited in the general fund.
Motion to file, information, sir?
Second.
Motion to file made and seconded, anything further? Hearing none, put it to a vote, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Thank you. Number seven, Nile S. Connors, Verizon submitting pursuant to 207 CMR 10.1 and 10.02. Six, FiOS TV channel guide, FiOS TV ray card, and FiOS TV sample customer bill for perusal.
Information to file, sir?
Information to file made.
Second.
And seconded, anything further? Hearing none, put it to a vote, all in favor. Opposed, unanimous. Thank you. Number eight, Mary Lou Foyle, Town Clerk submitting request that an article be submitted for the special town meeting warrant. She anticipates a shortage in the FY '19 elections and registration budget.
Sound over. Second.
Motion made and seconded, anything further? Hearing none, put it to a vote, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Thank you. Let's see. Number nine, Norwood Public Access submitting minutes of board meetings of December 3rd, 2018, and January 28th, 2019.
Information filed.
Information filed made and seconded. Anything further? Hearing none, put it to a vote, all in favor. Opposed, unanimous. Number 10, thank you. Number 10, Robert F. Sullivan, Senior Manager Comcast submitting in accordance with Massachusetts Cable Regulations, copies of policies and procedures, sample subscriber bill, work order and rate, and channel lineup information for perusal.
Information filed.
Information filed made and seconded. Anything further? Hearing none, put it to a vote, all in favor. Opposed, unanimous. Thank you. What's that? I don't want to get time for one more. Number 11, Alicia Gardner, Norfolk County Registered Deeds submitting notice of annual office hours at Norwood Town Hall Finance Committee Room on Thursday, June 13th, 2019, from 9:00 a.m. to noon.
Mr. Chair.
Mrs. Donahue.
Thank you. This is a service that Bill O'Donnell from Norwood, our Norfolk County Registered Deeds, provides to the towns in Norfolk County. If you want to check on your title to your house, if you want to talk about a homestead or anything in that that has to do with title, please come that day. It's a wonderful service that's provided.
Thank you, Mrs. Donahue. Do we have a motion to, information?
Information filed.
Made and seconded. Anything further? Hearing none, put it to a vote, all in favor. Opposed, unanimous. All right, it's 7:30, and we have a show cause hearing, a continuation of a show cause hearing scheduled, so if anyone involved in that show cause hearing would like to come to the table.
Is the Outback Steakhouse license?
Yes. We don't, it's a continuation, so we don't read it, but just so you know, it's a show cause hearing, Outback Steakhouse of Florida, LLC, DVA Outback Steakhouse.
Correct.
Okay? Failure to provide the public with the services contemplated by the license, Outback closed effective January 16, 2018. This is continued, our hearing is continued from November 13 of 2018. So we don't have to read a notice now, so we just go straight to it, right? All right. So if you gentlemen would introduce yourselves and tell us your business.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Brian Almeida, here on behalf of Mr. David Spiegel.
On behalf of.
Mr. David Spiegel.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, John P. Connell, attorney from Boston, here on behalf of licensee Outback Steakhouse.
Okay, very good. All right. All right. What can we do for you?
Well, Mr. Chairman, this is a matter that's been continued, I think, three times from the original notice. My client, Outback Steakhouse, has admittedly been closed since January of last year. I understand that the notice of the initial hearing, I think it was in June of last year, has been continued, so here we are today.
I think it was August 7th, right? Is it?
I think the original notice was in June, the hearing was in August.
The notice was in June, correct.
Okay. Thank you.
So I understand this board has not yet reached a determination on the alleged violation, which is non-use pursuant to Chapter 138, Section 77. Both, in February of this year, my client, Outback Steakhouse, entered into a contract, a license purchase and sale agreement with Brian's client, Mr. Spiegel, where Mr. Spiegel was going to purchase the license. The contract provided that Mr. Spiegel was supposed to file an application by today, March 19th. He has not done that, is my understanding. And pursuant to the contract that was entered into by the parties, both parties agreed if he had not done so, had not used his diligent efforts to file an application by today, that both parties would send representatives and request a continuance. So I think I speak on behalf of my brother here, that we're both requesting a continuance of this violation hearing. In, I think, my brother here can speak better as to how much time he thinks his client may need to find somebody who he can potentially either partner with or have a tenant in his building, but if this board is not inclined to grant another continuance of this hearing and wants to reach the decision whether there's been a violation for non-use, if they do, if this board does find such a violation, I'd request that pursuant to Massachusetts case law, which is enumerated in an appeals court decision, the Board of Selectmen of Saugus versus the ABCC, which has been upheld and further defined by the ABCC in another, in a number of decisions, that this board provide us 180 days from today to either transfer the license or renew use of the license.
Okay, very good. And you concur, sir?
I do concur in the request for the continuance. I would just state for the record that my client has acted diligently to attempt to find someone to occupy the space. I know there's discussions with two or three potential tenants. Nothing in writing as of this date, so I would concur in the request for the continuance or in the alternative, the 180-day countdown, so to speak.
Okay, very good. Ms. Plasko.
Excuse me.
And then Mrs. Donahue. Go ahead, Ms. Plasko.
What kind of a continuance? What period of time we talking?
Well, I'd actually defer to the buyer's attorney. We entered into agreement, the due date to file a transfer application was today. I personally am not familiar with what Mr. Spiegel has on the horizon with respect to a potential partner or a potential tenant, so I would leave it to council to say how much more time he would think that we would need. My main objective is obviously to avoid having a license revocation under any circumstance, so we want to work with the town. We understand it's been a long time, but, so I would defer to council on that.
And I would likewise defer to the judgment of the board, you know, recognizing the situation that we're in, but there is, there has been, you know, diligent work done in an attempt to find a tenant, and it hasn't been resting on our laurels, so to speak.
I understand, but it's fair to say at this moment, we don't, you don't have a potential tenant at the moment, is it?
That's correct.
Okay, you said that. Okay. I appreciate that. Mrs. Donahue?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Are you attorney counsel?
I am.
Sir, in-law, you remember that concept about clean hands?
It's a, clean hands is a defense and equity claim.
Right, right.
Yes.
And so what I was thinking while I was sitting here is that, is that if we give you a continuance, then we avoid you bringing forth the concept of 180 days that we would be waiting for them. In real life, in real life here, the doors closed in January a year ago, right?
Yes.
So how many months is that? 15?
According to my Bishop Fenwick High School map, that would be about 13, 14 months.
Well, yeah, so there we are. So the town of Norwood has been really good about this, don't you think?
Very, very good.
And I think that we all ought to play fair and have clean hands, and we all ought to take care of this matter, because it's not good to kid around about this. It's not good to try and hold the town over a barrel, you know? We're here to take care of the town, and we need you to straighten out that license. And we don't want to be threatened by 180 days ahead of us.
It's, I 100% agree, it's by no means a threat. It's a ABCC decision that's out there based on case law, that that's the way it's supposed to go.
I know, but you have a five-page copy of it, word for word and everything else, you know? So let's get this, if we give you a little extension, we expect that you get this matter settled within that time, because we've been very, very busy.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Donahue. Mr. Plasko.
Follow-up questions I didn't get to, thank you. So your agreement is for a application being for a transfer no later than today, and that hasn't happened.
Correct.
And you said you'd like a continuance or agree that the 180 days, you consider that a continuance of your, is your agreement separate today or is it continued?
If you're asking me, I don't think a continuance is a finding with 180-day notice. I think they're totally two different things. I think a continuance just kicks the alleged violation of non-use down the road, whereas a finding of a violation with 180 days' notice in conformity with the Saugus case procedurally is something very different. It may also have meaning between us two or our two clients as a matter of contract. So I think they're two different things. We're here, we're agreeing to request a continuance. My only request is if the board does not grant that continuance, because I understand it's been so long, that it recognize the case law that provides you should give when you reach a determination of violation, 180 days' notice. It's sort of like a final drop dead date.
Which I'm not sure I agree with you, but going with that for the moment, I'm still trying to determine if we get into that 180-day period, are we still waiting for a transfer application from Mr. Spiegel?
Yes.
Well, in terms of the purchase and sale agreement, the only obligation thereunder was to come here and request the continuance. As for the applicability of the 180 days and the case law, I admit that I don't know enough about that to offer an opinion.
I think the answer to the question is, it's between us two, the two parties. If it's not a continuance, but rather a determination of violation with 180-day notice, I believe, just having been presented this contract myself this morning, my reading of it is then the agreement terminates with the landlord and that the Outback is free to sell it to other parties. That's my reading of this contract. I don't know if that helps you understand.
So a grant, so if we find, if we, if we deny the request for continuance and instead find you in violation, the contract is terminated? Is that what you?
That would be this lawyer's reading of it.
Okay.
Counsel may have a different point of view, or the clients may have a different point of view, but that's my understanding. I don't know if you've been provided a copy of the contract, but.
Mrs. Donahue, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have not seen the contract, but our concern, we're here, the board is, our concern is the town of Norwood. That's our job, to take care of the town of Norwood. And if we don't grant you a continuance, if we say that you're in violation, then the town of Norwood is going to be losing 180 days of an active license, because you'll be able to drag it out for another 180 days, correct?
I wouldn't use the word drag out, but the, there's a, and I'm, you know, earlier you didn't want, the board didn't want to be threatened, I'm not trying to threaten anybody, but the legal remedies, if.
Right.
For example, you said, "We're going to deny a continuance, we're going to go right to revocation." Well, then the licensee would have the right to appeal within five days. You'd be up at the ABCC in six months. They would make a determination as to who's right, and if the town turns out to be wrong, then it gets remanded back to the town in eight months or so, and then you have 180 days. So I.
Only if you're correct.
Pardon me?
Only if you're correct.
Only if the appeal, the appellate is correct, correct?
When Outback was here in Norwood, you were a wonderful entity for the town of Norwood. Your company was wonderful, and David Spiegel is a wonderful part of the town of Norwood. So it's unusual that we have two excellent parties in a tiff, you know?
I don't think we're in a tiff. I think it's just the marketability of the license is tough. I think that's been the problem. I think we, we have, my client has actively had a broker trying to sell this license. Mr. Spiegel wanted a license, he wanted to get somebody in there, he's been actively trying to get somebody. It's just that.
But your broker can't, as long as he's in the picture?
Now that it's under agreement, correct.
But the agreement terminates today.
The agreement would terminate, my understanding is, is if the continuance is denied, you give a violation and you have 180 days. My understanding is the agreement is terminated, and then the current licensee is free to sell to other parties. I don't want to say that they would disagree or agree with that.
Yeah, I don't know if I necessarily share that understanding of the agreement, the obligation thereunder being to be here and ask for the continuance. I think the agreement is silent as to how it would play out going forward.
Okay. All right. Mr. Howard?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
Do I understand, I understand why you haven't brought in a licensed broker agency to sell a license, because you had the contract, but from this time forward, if we were to give you a continuance, would you then seek to sell the other, the license to other parties in the town of Norwood?
Well, I tried to say, there's two dynamics I'm dealing with. There's the town and there's the other party to a contract. The other party may, if there's a continuance, arguably, this contract with the landlord continues. It's kind of not absolutely clear on that. And if that's the case, so long as we're under contractual obligation to sell it to Mr. Spiegel, we would be prevented from selling it to a third party. If, in fact, the parties agree, or one party asserts that the contract is terminated, then you could sell it to a third party.
Well, again, like my cohorts, I'm interested in the responsibilities of the town of Norwood and more so, and.
And as the seller, we're, we want, we have the shared goal. We want to get rid of this license. By the way, the Outback Steakhouse demanded that I communicate to the board that we wish to come back here. We want to be good municipal citizens. We don't want to do anything that runs contrary to the interests of the town of Norwood or this board's interests. So we are trying to convey this license out. Before I got involved, there was a contract executed. We want to abide by that contract. We don't want to be alleged to be in breach of that contract, and we have a good faith duty to make sure the contract gets fulfilled. So we are trying to fulfill our obligations on the one hand, but on the other hand, knowing the patience of the board is probably wearing thin, that if you're going to decide not to continue it, you're going to find a violation, and you're going to issue a sanction, I just request that that sanction be in conformity with the Mass Law that requires 180 days.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Howard.
To continue my thoughts, I would kind of concur with you that that's the way to go for, for the town of Norwood's benefit. For one year here, we've had a license sitting in limbo, and the town has not gotten their share of taxes. We have the 1% on restaurant receipts that the town gets, which is a nice number each year for us, and well-needed nowadays in the current budget situation. But, but it would seem that to find, that the logical thing would be to find the violation and enact 180 days to get this on the market, because there may be other people in town that want that license.
Mr. Bishop?
Just so everybody's perfectly clear, we're clear here, but I want the people that are watching at home to understand, Outback possesses the license, not Mr. Spiegel.
Correct.
And if we deny this tonight, that severs any agreement or potential agreement you may have with Mr. Spiegel.
Arguably. They may have a different argument. Lawyers.
I agree with you.
Can argue on these matters.
And so you become somewhat of a free agent.
I'm sorry?
You become somewhat of a free agent, you go out there and do something else.
Arguably.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bishop. Mrs. Donahue?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. But attorney counsel, in real life, it wouldn't be that easy, because the buyer would just do something and tie it up even further, you know? So I think the most simple thing to do is probably to just grant a 30-day extension.
Totally up to the board. I've just tried to explain the, you know, the different dynamics in this unusual situation, where the buyer and seller want to work together, but we're up against a municipal regulatory board that has run out of patience, so.
So if we grant a 30-day extension, then that would give you both a chance to work it out as best you can. So how do you feel about that?
Well, I was going to, 30 days, I guess is okay by me. I was going to suggest two weeks, just because the arguments being made, and whether they are correct or not, could have a significant impact on us, such as whether we can take an action, or whether it's going to get tied up in appeals and so on and so forth, and some time to confer with council and so forth to decide what we think is the best decision for the town and for handling this license. I mean, I could argue all night about it, but, you know, I don't know that that gets us anywhere, and with a little help from council, maybe we'll feel a little more on solid ground what our position is, whether it's still, whether you agree with it or not, but at least we'll know where we are a little better, I think, than this evening. I don't want to go six months, I don't want to go three months to get to this point. If we have that two weeks or a month, and we get that information, then we can decide then we can decide if to grant and how long, but tonight we don't seem to have a clear answer on what that action should be. So, I would go for a shorter time, Mr. Chairman, a month or less.
So, continuance of a month or less, but just, just to review though, what's going to happen in two weeks?
Confer with counsel, read, read these cases again, try to figure out what the action should be, and how it affects the town. Because if we take the wrong vote tonight, we may have ourselves all tied up in something. We want to make sure we take the solid vote.
But the particulars of an agreement between the two parties on the other side of the room are not our concern, are they?
Not necessarily, but it might be if it ties our license, the town license, I understand, man.
All right, Mrs. Donahue?
Thank you. The reason that I said 30 days was because this particular time of the year, everybody in the legal profession is really busy with April 15th, tax day, and, and different things like that. So, it's a crunch time in, in legal business now, until after. So, I move that we continue this with 30 days.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second on the, anything further on the motion? All right, so the, the motion is to continue this hearing for another 30 days.
Practice should pick a, an exact date of time.
Should be 28 days, we're probably, we're four, four weeks from tonight, we moved that's a week, so it would be 28 days, is that, that okay?
Yeah, whatever four meetings are, probably the meeting we just canceled.
Yeah.
Meeting before the meeting, the meeting after.
It is, you're right, yeah.
Well, Mrs. Donahue's trying to avoid the tax season, so the following, the following meeting.
The 23rd. The 23rd, Shakespeare's birthday, is that it? Okay. So, so will you amend the motion to...
Anything scheduled, anything scheduled that night yet?
Mark and Jimmy.
I'm sorry?
Mark and Jimmy. So, that'll be two nights before the opening of the special.
So, 7:30 again?
So, 7:30, five weeks from tonight, okay? The motion is for a 35-day extension or continuance of the show cause here. Is that, did I get that right?
Yes.
Will you accept the amended second on that? Okay, so we have a motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, put it to a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Four to one in favor. All right, gentlemen, we'll see you in five weeks.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right. Continuing on with new business. Number 12, Jim Henry, Race Director, Ice Cream 5K and Family Fun Day, submitting request for the first annual Ice Cream 5K and Family Fun Day on Saturday, June 22nd, 2019, at 10:00 a.m. All pre- and post-race activity will take place at the Willett School. Mr. Henry has coordinated this event with the Norwood Police Department Safety Officer.
Motion approved.
Seconded.
Motion approved, made and seconded. Anything further? Hearing none, put it to a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Thank you. Number 13, Elizabeth Narquiso, St. Catherine of Sienna School, 249 Manhattan Street, submitting request for a one-day AAB license for April 6, 2019, from 7:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m. for the annual gala.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, made and seconded. Anything further? Hearing none, put it to a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Thank you. Number 14, Cemetery Deeds, for review and signature of the board?
Motion to sign.
Motion to sign, made.
Seconded.
And seconded. Anything further? Hearing none, put it to a vote, all in favor? Opposed, unanimous. That concludes new business. Now, moving on to unfinished business. Number one, Stacy Lane, Assistant Director, Norwood Board of Health, submitting updated status of reinspection of lodging house, at lodging house 175 to 179 Railroad Ave., Room D.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Bishop?
After the reinspection, everything appears to be in order, so apparently everybody's back in good graces again. Admit, is the motion that we file this for information?
All right.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded. Anything further? Hearing none, put it to a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. All right, that concludes unfinished business. We have three items of memoranda. One, Chief William G. Brooks III, Norwood Police Department, submitting copy of recognition for Officer Jennifer Hoyou. You've all had a chance to read it.
Yes, sir.
Information to file, Mr. Chair?
Information to file, made and seconded. Anything further? Hearing none, put it to a vote, all in favor? Opposed, unanimous. Number two, John H. Rogers, State Representative, 12th Dorfick District, submitting copy of support for grant application to the Mass DOT Municipal Bridge Program. This is for the bridge on Dean Street.
Yes.
We had a problem about a month ago, and we're going to get it fixed, and Representative Rogers is submitting a, a copy of his support that he sent to the Mass DOT.
Is that go signed by Senator Rush as well?
Right. Signed by Senator Rush as well. Thank you, Mr. Plasko.
Information to file, Mr. Chair?
Information to file, made.
On the motion?
And seconded. On the motion, Mr. Bishop?
I just want to thank Representative Rogers and Senator Michael Rush for their endeavors here. This is something that's going to save us a lot, a lot of money if we get this thing.
Yeah, you're right. Anything further? Hearing none, put it to a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. And memorandum number three, Selectman's Meetings for Review and Approval of the Board, minutes of December 11 and December 18, 2018.
Motion approved, as submitted?
Motion approved, submitted, made.
Seconded.
And seconded. Anything further? Hearing none, put it to a vote, all in favor? Opposed, unanimous. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to manager's update. Mr. Mazuko?
Just a first item is, Mr. Chairman, a request on behalf of Chief Brooks to declare the 1966 Volkswagen Safety Bug Surplus Property pursuant to MGL Chapter 30b, Section 15, so that it may be disposed of.
A Volkswagen bug?
You didn't know we had it?
I, I didn't know we had it, probably worth a lot of money.
They, they, they had a contest about the children in school named the bug. Steve and Plasko. It's very old.
Very good. So, we have a motion, so we're submitting request to declare it surplus, made and seconded. Anything further? Hearing none, put it to a vote, all in favor? Opposed, unanimous. Go ahead, Mr. Mazuko.
Item number two, a request for reserve fund transfer for a DPW overtime of $16,400, not directly related to winter operations, mainly a little bit at the landfill, and we've had quite a few water breaks this year that have caused the overtime account to go over. So, this will get us through till the annual, if we need additional funding at the annual, we would look to move money that time.
At the special.
I'm sorry.
At the special, yeah.
Mr. Chair?
Okay, Mr. Howard?
Just, as said, it's said by, by the manager and Mr. Ryan, that, that this is money to carry him over to the special, so we need the cash now, so I suggest we approve it.
So, we have a motion to approve?
A seconded.
Made and seconded. Anything further? Hearing none, put it to a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous, so we'll send that on to the Finance Commission. All right, anything else, Mr. Mazuko?
Just one brief update on two items that the staff will be recommending, that'll be on the warrant for the special town meeting. One of them is a donation checkoff that we would be able to add, we, there's a certain state statute we have to adopt, we'd be able to add a donation checkoff to a tax bill, where if somebody wanted to add a donation for seniors or disabled individuals, they'd be able to, to do that. The town of Westwood, nearby town that does it. The other one, and again, that's not coming out of your tax bill, that would be on top of, so it's not like when you file your taxes and you want X dollars to go. A lot of towns are starting to do it, it just gives people an optional way to donate that would go towards indigent seniors in town. There's also a similar program that would be a separate adoption of a state statute, but would allow us to do the same thing for veterans, which would give the Veterans Office the ability, if people donate the money, of course, on their tax bill or the excise bill, we would probably split one on each, to have a little bit more resources there for things that may not be covered under the normal veterans program.
Okay, very good. Mrs. Donahue?
Thank you. How would the seniors' money be administered?
Through the Council on Aging. That's how every other town that does it, does it. You know, they come up with some program guidelines, but one of the challenges we all face is sometimes the programs that are out there are either very strictly related to one particular area, and sometimes somebody just has a need, and we're looking for funding to help somebody with a specific need.
Mr. Plasko?
The, the veterans, we saw that was part of the municipal relief act, they came up with that, and we wondered if we were going to get to doing that, but the, it might have fallen asleep a little bit when you were talking about the other, the other one, and you just mentioned that it would be overseen by the, probably the council. Is that part of the law?
Uh, no, we couldn't...
Is it an acceptance statute?
It's an acceptance statute, yeah. We could have somebody else oversee it, and it just to me makes sense that we...
I just wondered if it was already in the law.
No, and it doesn't dictate where it has to be handled out of. I think some towns might handle it out of their manager's office or their clerk's office. I think since the senior center deals with that clientele on a regular basis, that would be the best place to, I think, house it out of. We sort of have some, we have a lot of little programs like this all around the town, and they're all in different offices, but there's not one office that you could put everything into, because again, the veterans programs, you're going to want to keep with the veterans' agent. This is specific to seniors, and there's an option for individuals with disabilities. That will be probably better managed out of the senior center.
Mr. Donahue?
Thank you. Mr. Manager, does that law allow schools to be listed?
There's not, not to my knowledge.
So, if that law was amended, that would be a good way to pick up money for schools?
I think so, but I don't think you're, you're, you're not raising hundreds of thousands of dollars. I mean, essentially, you get your tax bill, and it says, do you want to give an extra whatever amount to seniors or whatnot? And then the challenge, I think, we would face, even though we would want to raise money for the schools, who does it go to? Does it go to a specific school, and then people might want to give to a certain school? They can do that now. I mean, to be honest with you, you can donate money to any of the schools, or the school department, or any town department now. What these allow us to do is put a donation checkoff on a tax bill.
I understand that, but if we made a suggestion to Representative Rogers to amend the bill so that we could check off also schools, then we could give the money to the school, school committee, and even PTAs, we used to donate, like, even $50 or $100, and we bought books for the libraries. We could use that extra money.
Absolutely.
We should ask him to do that.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Donahue. Any, anything else?
I'm sorry, that's, that's all, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Mazuko?
No, sir.
All right, very good.
Well, I do, but I'll do it on my agenda.
Do it on your agenda? Okay, well, then, I'll tell you what, then, we'll move on to Selectman's agenda. And I'm not going to keep the audience waiting any longer, Mr. Bishop, go right ahead.
Thank you. Just two small articles. I don't know if I spoke to you at the, one of the winter concerts, or I spoke to the Chief Brooks, but I have had two residents of Berwick Place, that goes from the Rotary down to Wallpole Street. And since I've had that discussion with somebody, another person has joined up from the neighborhood. Apparently, when school gets out, rather than traveling in the other direction, they're coming out of the high school, around the Rotary, and the quickest way to escape the area is straight down Berwick Place to Wallpole Street. And they do that at somewhat of a higher rate of speed than is reasonable. And I thought maybe the suggestion could be that if we did have a detail up there already, or a police car stationed up there, maybe they could be in that particular area as opposed to maybe PBD roadside, to try to alleviate that, show a command presence. Number two, and the last one for the evening, I had a complaint from a resident of the senior housing on Everett Street. On Everett Street itself, on the Norwood side, we never seem to plow that sidewalk. Maybe a reason for that, I don't know, but there is a footpath that leaves the senior center and comes out to the sidewalk, but from that point, people wanting to go to Washington Street to get on the bus, if they may not have a car, and go uptown, for instance, they have to trudge through the snow or walk in the street, which is not really a good place to walk on Everett Street in that location. So, apparently, we're not going to get that much snow to have to worry about, hopefully, over the course of this next few weeks. So, maybe in the wintertime, and I'll remind you again, if we can think about some way of relieving that issue, so seniors can walk without snow on the sidewalk up to the bus. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop. Mr. Howard?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As the folks at home are probably aware, we are currently in Norwood, in the middle of a, a revaluation of all real estate property, and this revaluation will be done by a party coming to your house and asking to come in and look at the premises to assure that the valuation that the town has is adequate. How do I know this is going on? Because they came to my house today. That's how I know. So, please be prepared to have visitors. It, it's a company from outside Norwood that is doing this, and they have identification to substantiate who they are, so just want to let everybody know that this is going on right now. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Howard, Mrs. Donahue?
No comments, thank you.
Mr. Plasko?
No, I guess I might just very briefly talk about Forbes, now again, some people keep asking about it. We're not going to really know a whole lot more until we open the RFP bids on April 8th, but as a matter of general information, 26, I think it is, different people other than beyond staff have accessed the RFP, so there's always some interest in getting the particulars about the proposal. And they're from, many from Massachusetts, but they're from New Jersey, Rhode Island, Ohio, and as far away as India, so they're drawing some interest.
Wow.
But it's fair to say that there is, you know, some interest out there, and hopefully this will work out fine, but there really is nothing much more to say than that type of thing until we open the bid date of 8th.
Very good, Mr. Plasko, thank you.